So we're going to switch agendas to our supplemental agenda so we can discuss the financial and budget policies. I'm just filling time while you're doing that.
All right.
So we have a full agenda here that the town clerk will call us to. I don't know that we have to be calling to order and doing roll call again because we're all the same people. We will be getting to item four of the supplemental agenda, which is discussion and possible direction regarding the town's financial and budget policies. And we have eight of those listed. And I'm gonna stop talking as soon as Michelle gives me the nod that she's all caught up. Yep.
Um, I keep going. Oh, there it is.
Have to refresh your laptops or tablets. Okay, so we can go straight into the item for policy discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Council. At the conclusion of the last budget workshop, there was a general comment made by the council that you might want to take a look at some of your financial policies. I'm gonna take an educated guess, and I could be completely wrong in my educated guess. But I'm gonna walk you through some of the policies very quickly because I really think you want to focus on four. Based on the conversation was whether, and those are the policies that generally had a dollar amount assigned and a target. But I could be wrong, so I don't, you know, all of the-
I don't think we need to drill down on all eight.
I'm just gonna say, all of the policies are there if I'm wrong and somebody had a question about something.
So how about this? How about you tell us which four you're going to-
The four are on my thirty-two slides. I've condensed it all to two.
All right, so, given that, so the other four that are not listed, are there questions from the council on any of the policy- policies not listed on these four for discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilor Mordern.
For the drought reserve. It's just a fund, so we can do with it what we deem appropriate for water?
That's a council policy prerogative. The council policy, but correct, you've identified right now the framework. It belongs to the water fund, so it is not a general fund.
Right.
So within that, if you were to come back and make the decision, just like you all made the decision to allocate two hundred thousand a couple of years ago for the rate, it has a policy that says what it's supposed to be used for in the intent of the council. And if you wanted to modify that use to either be more restrictive or loosen it, that would be a recommendation that you would have to, you know. The current policy is how we will move forward with it absent a change in direction.
But it will never be fed into, it will only be drawn from?
Pardon?
It, there is no transfer in, it will only be drawn down?
Well, what would be drawn down would be, for example, if we needed to go buy water on the spot market, I would potentially move-
But we're not, we're not transferring anything into it. We will only draw from it, and then it will eventually-
Correct, we have not added anything. That's a council member. It's earned interest from that initial two million allocation, but the general fund has not contributed anything to that particular fund. And the water rate revenues are not sufficient to put more money into it either.
Correct, and if we, if we were to put money into it, it would only come from the general fund, correct? But that wouldn't happen because it's a water, it's a water-
There's two things. One, I would say right now, you also have another policy that says the general fund should not subsidize the utility enterprise fund. So consistent with that policy, my first answer would be no, because I don't have council authority to do so. You wouldn't see me propose something that is inconsistent unless there was a council direction to review the policy.
All right, thank you very much.
Any questions on any other policies not listed? Okay.
All right.
Fund balance policy.
The next four are all in the fund balance policy itself, and I'm going to hit on a key, a couple. Committed for emergencies, now what you need about this one is this one actually requires the town to declare an emergency in order for us to access. The target is set at twenty percent of general fund expenditures. We have two million right now, which is twenty-one percent. The assigned for budget contingencies is set at two forty. The assigned for legal contingencies is set at two fifty. Those are annual ones. Revenue stabilization, and I'd like you to think about if you were to look at how, how you might need to use something in a non-earthquake scenario or something, the loss of revenue, a decline. The revenue stabilization is generally where we would go first. It has the broadest applicability. Right now, its reserve is set at a target of a minimum of fifteen to incrementally increase to twenty percent by seventeen, eighteen. Right now, we're at two million, so one, we exceed your fifteen percent and your twenty percent target. So the question would be if you might want to adjust any of your minimums to reflect where you're at and then add a target for growing forward. The other thing I want to mention to you that it might be something we consider. Right now, we reallocate all of these every year, and that's why you see the discussion. And it might be worthy of a conversation about pulling both of these into their own funds. So that the committed for emergencies would actually be the emergency reserve fund, much like the, and then it's pulled out, so it's restricted for those purposes, and it wouldn't be an annual allocation. And then during your annual discussion, you would look about whether you want to allocate more to those funds. Similar to the equipment reserve fund eighty-one, eighty-two, the replacement. Just something, what it does is it shows that those are allocated for that specific purpose. Same kind of concept, but what it does is it makes them a standalone fund, makes it a little harder to, you know. It takes it out of the annual allocation process because you would start with the minimums unless you've drawn down in them. So it's just something for consideration.
Did you draw down for the revenue stabilization following the wildfires?
The end answer is no, because we ended the year with the insurance settlement. Had we not had the insurance settlement, the answer would have been yes.
Okay, and did we or did we not make the decision to keep these where they are because we wanted the flexibility that putting them in their individual funds would not allow?
The change that I'm talking about wouldn't change the flexibility of the use, Mayor. What it does is takes it away from the annual allocation because every year what we're doing is resetting what is in the fund balance. So if you were to say it's at two million, then it sits over there at two million, and next year it will still have two million. And, you know, we sort of look at, I don't know, do we have a, trying to think if there's a slide that shows the, um, the budget?
Well, let's, let's not go too far down this until we get more questions or comments from council.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mueller, did I see you moving forward to have a-
Yeah, I, I had a general question about revenue stabilization. I certainly understand setting a minimum for that. Floors are always useful. But why, is there any really good justification for setting the goal to incrementally increase it to twenty percent by a year that's out of date, and now we already know that we're kind of above that? Are you reading that slide?
Well, you're, what I would say is total of twenty percent, and you're already exceeding it, you're at twenty-nine percent.
Yes, yeah, so, I mean, but then if we were gonna change it because it's outdated, would there be any strong justification for actually setting an increase or just leaving it blank?
This is your, again, you all have indicated-
I have no problem with the minimum.
That's what Steve's asking us. That's exactly what he's asking of us. Do we want to basically eliminate the second column and, at least for the, for the one you're talking about, revenue stabilization, and create a number in a fund?
Or just a fund that doesn't really have, like, here's our target?
No, but there would be a number in that fund that-
For the money, right? Yeah.
So what you just said was that we would get rid of the current policy by creating the funds that the town manager suggested to put it into a fund to where it wouldn't be a reserve set at a certain number. We would just feed into it every year?
You'd have your policy, but instead of, see, right now when we build the budget, we start by taking your revenue, and then we come in and plug those targets in as opposed to it being, so it's subject to the annual allocation would be the better way I would describe. By putting it in as its own fund, just like the other restricted funds, it sits there, and then you still have the policy discussion and, you know, you can still move more money into it if you want to build by target. So that's why I'm saying the fund is just a way to get it a little more focused.
And, and I think if I understood Councilmember Mueller's comment, setting a minimum-
Minimum, yeah.
Would then make the more sense rather than targets that we're trying to put money into.
Right, yes, and what I'd also say, when we initially started, because I, you guys, again, this is the incremental of where you guys have been prudent in planning and long range. When we started with the revenue stabilization, that was a very new concept. And you were, and it was, the goal was to grow it incrementally, and I guess what you could say is we've done a good job of growing it. And right now, it exceeds your fifteen percent minimum, and it well exceeds your target of getting the minimum to twenty percent.
So let's take a look at these individually then, I guess. If, generally, is there a consensus that we want to potentially consider modifying the policies so that, as Steve said, there are funds that are already established, so they're kind of preset in the budget? That generally-
I'm interested.
What we're interested in at least talking about?
Well, I'm, I'm happy with the minimums, but-
Yeah, I think we would do that with, with funds that have minimums, and then the policy would state those minimums-
Yep.
Would be our, our desired base, basement, and not setting targets. Vice Mayor? Not either way.
Well, I'm, so basically what we're saying is we want to set up a separate fund called revenue stabilization fund, and we want to set a minimum percentage tied to T O T revenue, which is what we have now, but we just want to move it to its own fund, and I'm okay with that.
Correct, because it moves it out of the annual allocation for the general fund, yep.
Okay, so-
So the second question is, do you want to put new minimums reflecting, and that's why I'm saying right now we're exceeding all of those, and I'll still write the policies to reflect that.
As long as the flexibility still exists, which you said it does, that's where, if we restrict funds too tightly, we can anticipate how we might need those funds to be allocated. So I think that's one of the reasons we've had it in the general fund, to have maximum flexibility. If you still have that flexibility, then-
Yep, you, here I want to say-
Sounds like it makes it a little easier to have the, have the box filled in before we start.
It's exactly, that's, I think, Mayor, a good way of doing it because that way we're not reallocating every time and then looking. The other thing is, we're not going to change, I want to be really clear, I'm not recommending any change in the definition or the structure of how those funds would be used. The only thing I'm suggesting now is, do you want to change, under the current policy, the committed for emergencies is twenty percent. So we're at twenty-one right now, so that, that one, you might be okay with maintaining twenty percent. When you get down to revenue stabilization, we're well to the right of the target. So those targets are, you know, we are in good shape, so it may be appropriate to say you want a thirty percent.
But if we said a minimum of twenty, we're also fine. We just happen to have twenty-nine.
Correct, that's, and all I'm asking is, because you can tell me, I can keep putting, but I'm just saying, that's why I'm saying, is it-
Got it. Councilor Durham?
How much did the, sorry, you might not have this off the top of your head. How much did the T O T drop without the insurance being thrown back into, if we, how much was it off a year of the fire at the, without any payment back into it from an outside source?
I don't know exactly.
Yeah, sorry, I realized that.
I want to say about five hundred.
About five hundred and thirty-seven thousand?
Five hundred and thirty-seven. Based on-
Six hundred and six point eight two, six point eight million? I'm gonna do math. Thank you.
About nine percent.
Thank you, it's nine percent, thank you.
So the other thing, remember, we targeted, when we put the revenue stabilization, and again, this is in part because of how we've structured the committed for emergencies. Some cities, if you were to go look at them, their emergency reserve fund would not have the language restricting that two million to be used only when a local emergency has been declared. It would just be the catch-all fund. So in our case, the revenue stabilization is sort of the first place that we would go. Actually, the first place we would go is the assigned for budget contingencies or legal depending. Second would be revenue stabilization. So if we had a, a big loss of something, and as you can see, we'd have the ability to weather a couple of things, depending on what that is, with that current balance, long-term?
So, sorry to interrupt you here, but I get the committed for emergencies being a declared emergency, that's a separate condition. Revenue stabilization could be, a hotel has a water line break and fifty rooms are offline for-
Right, it covers-
And we're, we're looking to recover revenue or maintain it. So it, it looks at very differently than just natural disasters and other emergencies.
Correct, and that's what I'm saying.
Or renovation of seventy-five rooms.
Correct, it gives you the most, or, you know, sales tax even, even though we don't include that. It gives you the broadest opportunity to make up revenue and maintain your service levels rather than having to come in and do a de-chronian cut and slash services. So that's why I'm saying, I call it the most flex, your language is fine. The question is simply, do you want to change the dollar amounts of the target? You have good language on both of those. I'm not suggesting language change.
So, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Speaking of the language, we keep using the word target, which is currently in our policy. Target funding is X. So if we send it to a separate fund, and one year we say, you know what, we really don't have the money to put fifteen percent in here, then target, that word allows us the flexibility to that year say, we're not able to put any in, or we're gonna put eleven in. Am I correct in that?
Yes, except we start with a complete allocation.
The target's already met. If we, for example, if we say we want twenty percent of the contingency for emergencies, we're already there. So we don't have to put any more money in.
But actually-
But that's where I'm going is, what is a target?
Because right now, these are not standalone funds. They start from scratch every year, and they're a budget allocation, which is why we're recommending that they be a fund. And then, in some years, you may not put anything more in them because we still maintain the minimums that you want. But I'm just saying, if you look at the, the front page-
That's the same thing I was saying, that converting them to funds and having those funds fully allocated to our minimums, we don't, we're not obligated to put anything more into them unless we choose to.
Correct.
In any given year.
So it would come out of the general fund fund balance one time, it would come out into its new fund, so that two million dollars. And then you don't have to look at it annually and say, how much do we want to put in, because it already has the two million that will continuously stay in that fund. And then if you decide to put more in from general fund, then you could put more in, but you don't have to look at it on an annual basis.
And what if there's ever a need to draw down below the target? I mean, let's say one year we have a really terrible year, and we go into revenue, we spend half of our revenue stabilization, we spend a million dollars. Then the next year, we're not in such great shape either. Does the current language, or as the new language would be proposed, does it force us to bump it back to two million? Or could it just stay at a million? Because, because the two, the fifteen percent is a target. And if we miss it, we miss it. Is that correct?
Correct, but what I, well, it becomes, it's the guiding principle right now for how we put the allocation. So if you go to your, your, your summary budget page, if it's a fund, it would show it's a fund with the two million, and then I build the budget starting. The short answer is you're, it's both, because it, you know, then your allocation becomes, if you're using it, that's what it's there for. In other words, if you have a loss of revenue, then we would, and obviously you'd have to relook at how was your target to rebuild it because if you draw down five hundred thousand, you may not have an excess of five hundred to bring it back next year because it could be cyclical. So I'm just saying, I think keeping the target language in there is still prudent even if we move it to fund. The question, I think, was especially in the area of the revenue stabilization, given that we have twenty-nine percent and given the growth. Because here's the other thing, the T O T growth has been substantial since you put that in place. And maybe twenty percent is your minimum makes sense. Again, that's your discretion, but the policies that we're talking about are not significantly changing just by us moving them and creating the funds. And I would also say our auditors would suggest that this is a prudent fiscal standpoint, too.
There's still the ability for this council or future councils to change that fund balance.
Absolutely, and you, you can by policy reduce it or add to it.
I have another question.
Yes, Councilmember Mueller?
So the committed for emergency policy, which will be a fund if we decide, who is responsible for declaring an emergency? Is it the town?
We would have to be, the way it's currently written in your policy is it has to be a declared local emergency that the council declares.
So it could be all sorts of stuff. We don't really have guidelines around that.
I think the typical expectation, you know, if you declare an emergency, you have to declare a reason and something. Typically, most of them are, at some point, they have a fiscal implication or a cost where it exceeds our ability. You know, you, most of them, you think of the natural disaster or something, but-
Well, there is a, there is a municipal code section listed.
Right.
So I mean, that's why I'm saying, in, in most cases, like I say, you, the nice thing is when you look at both of them, you see four million dollars, which is, just between those two is, you know, close to fifty percent of our overall. That's a very healthy, and then you throw in, so I'm just saying, it's a positive situation, but the revenue stabilization is the one we're most likely going to in a non-emergency situation, like your point. If we were off five hundred thousand for T O T revenue because all of a sudden a bunch of people didn't show up, and, you know, it was a slow gradual buildup, that's where you would go. You would pull the money, and then we would adjust budget and stuff next year.
Yeah, I, I think it's a very inclusive definition in, in our municipal code, talking about extreme peril to the safety of persons and, or, and/or property within the town, conditions including air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic, riot, or earthquake, labor controversy, et cetera, et cetera. So it's very inclusive here.
And I, I, the only thing I didn't see in that was who declared it. So if we can declare it, then it just didn't, I didn't see that part.
Right.
You would have to declare it actually the way that it's written.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the whole council, correct, it's not just the town manager or the mayor.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the council, I'm just saying, use of the general fund emergency reserve would be appropriate if the town declared a state or federal emergency or declaration of a local emergency as defined in Yountville Municipal Code.
Yeah, I don't remember if it's the mayor or the town manager or the entire council, but we could-
The mayor can, the mayor and/or the manager can initially declare, but it has to be ratified within fourteen days by the council.
Okay, so we're getting off topic, I think.
Well, you know, I just want to talk about rent stabilization. I, I know it appears to be a really healthy number, and we've got some money for emergencies, but, you know, there, there could be a lot of things that really come up that we, you know, if this was funded, we wouldn't always have to go out for, for debt service either. If something new came up that we're not anticipating, right? We could use this.
Possibly, I mean, I don't want to say yea or nay without knowing the circumstance of the policy, but potentially.
A piece of land comes up and we want to build affordable housing on it, just, I mean, I don't know.
I'm gonna say potentially.
I'm gonna try to move us forward. I'm gonna suggest that we consider twenty-five percent as a fund- minimum for the revenue stabilization and twenty percent for the committed for emergencies fund. I don't know how to do a percentage with the other two because we don't know what the percentage is.
What was the number?
Twenty, twenty percent for committed for emergencies, twenty-five for revenue stabilization.
And that would be a minimum?
Right.
Correct.
Is that a target or a hard?
That's a minimum. I'm just calling it a minimum.
And what about twenty-five percent to, as a target for increase as well?
I'm suggesting that these are minimums. We don't have targets.
So no targets, okay, I totally agree with that.
And then the other two, if we don't need a percentage for budget contingencies and legal contingencies, you're saying that those could, they would still be standalone funds as opposed to, we can't, why can't we incorporate the legal contingencies into-
Okay.
Something that exists?
These are, these, this is an allocation-
I understand that.
And what we try to do here is, they're in the budget, should it be necessary, and you would have to approach it. So it's just, we put it in there from a planning standpoint, anticipating that hopefully we don't have to use them. So they would be the first place, a good example is when we bought the one affordable home. That is the one time I exhausted the assigned for budget contingencies. So that's, I wouldn't, I'm not recommending a change there, and they, they need to be, and I'm comfortable with them also continuing as an annual allocation because they're not, they're not a fund.
Let's not go backwards now, Steve. You have us moving forward on funds, so. I'm gonna propose, like I was saying, that the budget contingencies and legal contingencies are funds that have these minimums, and then what I also already said, twenty percent minimum for emergencies, twenty-five percent minimum for revenue stabilization.
I'm absolutely fine with that because we can revisit this every year as we should, so, I'm fine with that. I'll, do we need a motion?
Are you including the movement of the two to a fund status?
I could, if we need a motion.
Yeah, I did.
We do need a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move our current buckets, I guess, to a fund status and change the minimum for the revenue stabilization to twenty-five percent and- Did we set a target for emergency?
Twenty.
Twenty, that's already twenty, right?
Yes, well, it's twenty-
We're not changing it then?
Correct, but we're just, we're making it a fund.
You're making it a minimum.
Making it a fund, make them all a fund and just changing the minimum for revenue stabilization.
Correct.
I'll second. Sorry, I just need to be really clear, the target funding for revenue stabilization under the motion is-
We're not using the word target.
Nope.
Okay, so we are saying a hard stop minimum of twenty-five percent of the T O T revenue budget.
Right.
And then if it falls below the minimum, then the council has the discretion, but with the guidance that they, the council should get back to that minimum. There is no target because we're already at the numbers with the current funds available. Makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, I just have some problems with that because as our revenues flatten out and we're gonna take twenty-five percent hard stop, that's it, it's not a target, it's the minimum. I think that, that takes away some flexibility to me. I have no issue with a target of twenty-five percent minimum, but that's just my-
The funds can be reevaluated every year. This is just starting with a number in the fund line item of the budget. It can be changed.
It can be, but I also want to pay-
This is semantics now.
It is a little bit, but it's also, right now, these funds, they, we have to, the revenue stabilization and the emergency reserve are allocated every year. So your number in your fund balance is inflated by four million because the general fund is carrying four million that is allocated. So this is going to pull down and show them as restricted. If, you know, if you had your summary, you'll see how we, so to me-
Yeah, that, that's not, that doesn't have anything to do with the target versus the minimum.
No, it doesn't, and I'm just saying, but you will annually look at it.
Non-target.
We'll tell you, you currently are, you know, you'll hear me say, would you like to add more?
So the motion that's been seconded is minimums of twenty percent and twenty-five percent as identified, and the other two as funds with those dollar amounts in them. Correct?
Yes.
The minimum on emergen, the minimum on emergency is twenty percent of the general fund expenditures, and on revenue stabilization is twenty-five percent of the T O T revenue. So two different benchmarks for the percentage, okay.
The one doesn't change, the emergencies doesn't change, but it's just considered a fund instead of a policy, and there is a change to the revenue stabilization number, which we've already exceeded.
And it'll make our general fund look more realistic.
So there is a motion and a second. Need to get to a, have we done that electronically? Did we do a motion and a second?
No, it didn't come up. To do that, so it's true.
All right, so, any further discussion, all in favor of the motion as presented? Wait, is there a-
No, I was, I was reading about-
Oh, you were raising your hand, okay. All in favor of the motion as presented? So please say aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Now, do we need to go back into, get out of this agenda and go back to the other one? Okay.
Are we done?
No, I just want to say on behalf of the town staff, we really appreciate your input, your effort and your guidance. As you know, this starts way back with our parameters discussion, and it frames, you know, the conversations. The good news for us is we do have a little bit of editing and obviously the policy section, but we look forward to having the document reflecting your guidance and direction ready for approval on Monday, June seventeenth.
Okay, thank you. So the printed agenda has our next meeting June fifth. I know it's June fourth as it's listed on the-